Commissioner Jones, would you lead us in prayer and prayers, please?
Yes, sir. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for each and every one that's in attendance today. We ask that you would be with us, give us understanding and discretion today. Father, we thank you for the ability to change everything and make it better for our future. Father, we thank you for it today, in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America, to the people which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, and every and justice for all.
Next on the agenda will be approval of the minutes.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Masses, second by Commissioner Jones, all in favor. That passes unanimously. Next on the agenda will be payment of the county bill.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Masses. Any discussion on that? I've got a question. What that Florida Association County?
That is the county's general liability premium.
Okay, yes, sir. Okay, all right. Any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed, that passes unanimously. Next on the agenda will be the organization of meeting.
Yeah, Commissioners, it's that time of year where we basically reappoint the chairman, the vice chairman, and we switch or move or add committee assignments as necessary. Over the last few years, what we've basically done is allow each chairman to serve two years, each chairman and vice chairman to serve two years, and then we make the switch at chairman at that point. So Commissioner Lockley has just completed his first year, so if we follow basically the training we've been doing for quite some time here, then this will be Commissioner Lockley's second year as chairman and Commissioner Masses' second year as vice chairman.
I'll make a motion when you get through.
Okay, so I just...
I'll make a motion to leave Mr. Noah as chairman and let put Ricky as vice chairman because it'll be Ricky's next time to be the chairman. He hasn't been the chairman yet. I done been it one time, so let Ricky have it the next time.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Masses, second by Commissioner Parrish. All in favor? All opposed, that passes unanimously. Okay, committee assignment?
Now, are there any committees that you guys want to come off or re-serve or?
Mr. Chairman, I have some. Michael, I would like to come off of transportation disadvantage, and I'd make a motion to put Commissioner Bolt in that chair spot.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Parrish. You accept that?
That'd be fine. I had a good experience when I substituted, and I think I feel good about that.
Okay.
Thank you.
All in favor? All against, that passes unanimously. Any more assignment?
That's good, thank you.
I do have one more, Mr. Chairman, if that's okay. Michael, so far, we have been a member of Opportunity Florida for a couple of years. We're going to not have anybody go into that meeting. I would like, with this board's permission, to start attending those on a regular basis. I don't know how it's structured as far as if there's anything to pay you back and forth, but anyway, we'll find out and go from there.
I'll email Susan once the motion is made.
I'll make a motion.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Parrish, second by Commissioner Masses. All in favor? All opposed, that passes unanimously. That's opportunity for all of us.
That's good.
Okay. Any more? That's it. Okay, next on the agenda will be public comments. Come up, sir. You don't have to raise your hand in public comment. Just walk on up.
I wanted to make sure you saw me, Commissioner. My name is George Pruitt. I'm a business owner and a resident of East Pointe and the chief of the East Pointe Voluntary Fire Department. I've just got two things I want to kind of go over this morning. Number one, I see here that we have a land use change that would probably benefit East Pointe in a big economic way, and I understand there's a move by a few individuals to stymie this, and I can't understand for the life of me why every time some economic development comes to East Pointe, people want to shoot it down. We need jobs and we need, you know, we need good development, and that looks like good development to me, and I heard somebody say, "Well, it's close to the bay." Every station in Franklin County is just about close to the bay. I mean, if you really look at it. So that's not even an issue, and there's ways to deal with that. The other thing is that, you know, some years ago, like 12 years ago, the county commission that was sitting at the time promised Franklin County they were going to get a new hospital with some money that we raised by the one cent gas tax. I, for one, want to go on record and say I would adamantly be against closing the hospital in Appalachia Cola. There are people in this county, a lot of them of lesser means, that if they have a loved one in the hospital, and I know this is a social issue, and I'm not really big on social issues most of the time, but they couldn't go visit their folks, you know? My dad was in and out of hospitals for two years before he passed away, and we were there every day. Thankfully, we had the means to be able to do that. But I just think it wouldn't be a fair thing to the community and to the county to close that hospital, and I think we need to find a way to keep it open in some form. And that's all I have. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I might. For those of you that are here to speak on the public hearings later on at 10:30, it's not that you can't speak on those matters during public comment, but there's also time set aside during the 10:30 public hearings where you can also make public comments. Just so you understand that you can speak now, but you also have an opportunity at 10:30 if you want to hold it until it's actually the time for the public hearings. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Public comment?
I didn't put my name on here. I didn't know I was supposed to, but my name's Donnie Matheson. I live out at Southland. Recently, I received a letter from Mr. Michael Morone stating that y'all wasn't going to have an engineer come out and look at the ditch problem out there. And I know everybody says, "Well, it's your problem." No, it ain't my problem, it's the county's problem. It's a county maintained ditch. All the water on Peachtree runs right in front of my house to a 15-inch culvert. It's not 18. I've measured it several times. And the culvert runs from west to east with the west end being higher or lower than the east end, which means the water has to come up over halfway in the pipe before it starts trickling out the other end. I believe if y'all run that ditch from Peachtree down to Long Street and turned it down long and let it run under Lindell, I believe that water would run out into the big ditch that everybody says will back up, but there ain't no way it can back up if it don't back up on Long. And I would like to, I ain't going to say much up here, but I would like for y'all Commissioners to come out and see me and let me show you what I'm talking about, because me sitting here talking is just words, but I can show you how that water should run, and it would run off, not have to run north or east or west or, but run towards the bay where it's supposed to go, out to the river, to the bay, because the river runs to the bay, and that's all I got to ask. But I'd appreciate it if y'all come see me. My number, if y'all can't find me no other way, is 850-323-1239, and I live at 1584, the one that was wrote on this letter. I thank you very much.
Public comment?
Yes, Mike O'Connell from the St. George Island Civic Club. I've just got a quick announcement. On December 5th, we're going to have the lighting of the Christmas trees and a Christmas parade on the island. It's going to form at the Lighthouse Park, and we're going to give out books to the kids and have face painting and all other kinds of events, so you're all invited. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
What time?
5 o'clock. 5 o'clock on the island at Lighthouse Park.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Karen Martin, Franklin County Humane Society Director. Good to see you all again. I've been coming to talk to you guys for the last 10 years, and my experience has always been good. I've always felt that you understand the role that we play in this community and are respectful of it. You all would be hard pressed to talk to anyone in this community that hasn't reached out to us at some time or another, either to adopt a family member. Mr. Schuler's family has adopted several themselves, reached out to us to bring in an animal they can no longer care for, bring us a stray that they have found, or come to us for a spay neuter voucher program. Our work is critical to this county, and you've always seemed to get that. You've always seemed concerned and sympathetic to the needs of the homeless animals in our care. I just don't understand how you all have decided to withhold the funding that is critical to our mission. This morning, we loaded two vehicles full of 15 dogs and puppies and 10 cats and kittens to go to Tampa Bay, to one of four of our partners down there. We have been operating at capacity for weeks now, and we need that room. One man is bringing us today two adult dogs and four puppies, as well as a litter of puppies that was dumped at his property. There is a woman bringing us four puppies, and Animal Control is bringing us six beagles. So we've got 15 animals out, and we're bringing 22 in today. That's what we deal with. So I'm up here again just asking you to release the promised funding that is so instrumental to our mission. Thank you.
Two things on that. One is, it's out of our hands. Once the lawyer get involved, we got to wait till they get it straight. Once the lawyer get involved, the Commissioner can't do nothing. Another thing, Commissioner not trying to be hard on y'all, but it was said we were holding back money, and during the same time y'all were coming before, y'all had a half of the money was over there y'all hadn't even picked up. You just picked it up the last...
That was unfortunate accounting. Snafu.
Yeah, I know, but it's not our fault. I mean, once it get in the lawyer's hand, we can't touch it. We through dealing until they straighten it out.
I just have a question about that because I don't understand that. Isn't it the lawyer's, the county lawyer's job to suggest or make suggestions to the county commission as to how to proceed through these kinds of things?
It is, and until he do that, we through dealing with it. We can't. Once you say lawyer, this commission is through with it.
I was under the understanding that it was the county's attorney who suggested moving forward in that way.
Well, don't matter. Once the lawyer get involved, we through. We can't touch it. It's against the law for us to say, and we don't even supposed to be talking about it.
Thank you.
Public comment?
Welcome, Mr. Bud Hayes here over behalf of the Humane Society. I'm sorry I run in late. There's really been no dialogue with the lawyer. Mr. Schuler and I always have a great relationship, and I always appreciate that.
Sir, you have to talk.
Mr. Schuler and I have a great relationship, but there's been no dialogue. We have, I speak for the Humane Society, we have gone back to what I believe the status quo before the money was withheld, and now we're getting nowhere, and we need the money. Obviously, the more money we have, the more animals we can take care of, and we're just not really progressing. Michael, I usually talk on a very regular basis, but there's been no dialogue. Apparently, the constituents here want a shooting range, and we, the Humane Society, are the people who are now trying to find a shooting range for your constituents. We're working with the Sheriff's Department to see if we can open up their range for shooting, which is ultimately the big boogeyman here about shooting for our shelter, and we're working towards that end, that we're doing, trying to find a shooting range for the people. It probably should be your job, but we're doing that diligently, doing so, trying to work with Mr. A.J. Smith. So we just say, y'all can continue to withhold our money, but it's just not right, not fair. The money was budgeted to us. We depend on the money, and we don't have the money and we need the money. That's all I've got to say. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, can I say something, please? Mr. Hayes?
Yes, sir.
Point of order or clarification. So first off, this board is pursuing other ways to do a shooting range. Just because I don't put it on Facebook or because it's not in the paper doesn't mean I'm not having that discussion with people.
I appreciate that.
This board knows its job, and it's doing its job. Second off, to highlight what Commissioner Lockley said, there was a snafu or whatever you want to call it. Last year, you guys did not ask for half of the funding that was budgeted to you. So at the last meeting, you received $18,000-plus dollars. So if you didn't need it the last quarter, the way I look at it, you're halfway through this year already, because what was set aside was 36. Now, that's my prerogative. I could be wrong, but for this board to continue to take it on the nose like we did something wrong, we didn't start this process, and it's got to where it is because we were pushed to that limit, and that's all I have to say.
Commissioner Jones, and you were the one who pointed out to me that we had not asked for advocates, and I appreciated that, and that was my lack of due diligence to follow up on that. We all kind of worked on the same goal, but somehow we've got this money just being held in suspension for some reason, which I deem under no authority to withhold the money, except you're doing it except for Mr. Schuler, I guess.
Sir, you have to talk to the attorney. We can't help you.
Michael, I talk very often, sir, and we have a great relationship and I have certain respect in Mr. Schuler's abilities.
Until he come back and tell us we can move forward, I will hand the task.
Mr. Lockley, I'm going to be twisting his arm this afternoon. I hope he just holler loud, okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, let me just add one more thing, just to complement what Commissioner Jones has said. Two weeks ago, I met with a gun range consultant who has brought a standard of practice for gun ranges published by the NRA. This is a standard manual that develops high-quality gun ranges, and then we went on a field trip over to the Sheriff's Gun Range along with Major Martinez to just look at what the opportunities are, and I feel like this board is very empathetic and has made site visits already, and we'll press on to find a good alternative for you, and that began about two weeks ago.
Mr. McGarry is doing a wonderful job trying to find what needs to be done for that gun range, to open it to the public, and if you looked at the standards for a gun range, you know what we call a gun range behind the Humane Society is not a gun range.
Understood.
It meets none of the requirements distance-wise, size-wise, or anything else for a gun range. And it does default back to the NRA standards when the county has not prescribed a standard for a gun range.
Mr. Schuler, will you entertain that, please, sir?
Mr. Chairman, let's go back in history of, just a few months back, the Humane Society unilaterally closed the public road going back to the public gun range, and that road remained closed until the board took action, which was to withhold their funding as a response to their unilateral closure of the public road. We have since that time, Mr. Hayes and myself have an agreement, which has been brought to the board, ratified by the board, that we will maintain this status quo, which is the road stays open, funding remains suspended while we work with the sheriff in good faith to try and relocate the gun range. That is where we are in this process. As you heard Mr. Hayes and Commissioner Bolt mention, there is a consultant, is my word, maybe not necessarily what anybody else's word is, but the way I would describe it, a consultant is working with the sheriff to come up with a plan and a cost estimate. Once that is completed and presented to me, I intend on bringing that cost estimate back to you for your consideration, and then hopefully we can wrap this up. Since I don't have that cost estimate, I haven't brought it to you. I did inform Mr. Hayes, it's probably been a couple of weeks ago, that that's kind of where we are, waiting on this cost estimate, waiting on this consultant. That is something that I don't have control over, and I don't think I need to be micromanaging the sheriff's efforts because it's his gun range, it's his consultant, and I'm respectfully waiting on that process to play itself out. Given the way these types of matters work themselves out, I don't think there's been an unreasonable delay. I think everybody, Mr. Hayes, including the Humane Society, the sheriff and the county are all working together in good faith to try and find an acceptable solution, and that is what I'm willing to continue working on. But I think until we do have a final solution, that the funding should remain suspended. I hope that answers your questions.
Thank you.
Just one point of clarification. Mr. Schuler refers to a public road. There is no public road over our property. We own that property in free simple. It is not a public road. You can call it expressway, Big Trail, you can call it anything else. It's not a public road.
Sir, your time up.
If we get into litigation, we'll resolve all this. We're trying to avoid everything.
I welcome the challenge from Mr. Schuler.
Your time up, sir.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, I want just one more thing. Maybe this is an appropriate time to do this, and if Commissioner Masses agrees. We had talked a couple of weeks ago about adding a signage at the bottom of the existing sign there on 98 where it says "The Animal Shelter" and turns you in the direction of Highway 65. We would put wording underneath that that says "Humane Society Pet Adoption Center," add that to the bottom of the sign, and is that something we could do since we're on that thought?
Commissioner Bolt, the board by policy does not take action during public comment, but you're about to have a department head come up, and you could bring it up at that time.
I'm Bonnie Stewart, and I work with the Humane Society. I'm coming in a little unknowledgeable about this, but if the road is now open and everyone is working toward a resolution, why are the funds suspended? And I'm asking that in all seriousness. Why are the funds suspended? We still have living beings that need to eat and get vaccinated and have surgeries. That hasn't stopped. People are still using the gun range, so that side, if you will, is still able to utilize the issue, which is the gun range, but the Humane Society has funds that are suspended. I think whatever happened before, if it was a snafu or whatever, to bring that up now really doesn't do anything except irritate people. So why are the funds suspended?
Because they not through.
I'm sorry?
Because they not through with that.
But if they're not through, the gun range is still being used, right?
Well, Miss Bonnie, let me ask you a question.
Yes.
Y'all spent $18,000 since last meeting?
I'm not involved in the finances of it. I'm involved in the animal part of it.
Well, somebody need to, don't tell us the half of the story, tell us the whole part.
But I thought you already said that, so I would just be reiterating that. My question is...
We need to know the whole thing. I mean, they come tell y'all part of the story, and then y'all come up and blast us.
I'm not blasting. I'm asking a serious question. I don't understand.
The question is, it's in the lawyer's hand when they get through.
So do we tell the dogs that when they don't have food to eat?
Well...
That it's in the lawyer's hands?
Yeah. Yes, ma'am.
I'm sure they'll understand.
If you spend $18,000, I don't see it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Next public comment? Next on the agenda will be superintendent of public work.
If I may, Commissioners, Commissioner Parrish has to leave shortly at 10:00 here to attend, to represent the county consortium meeting. He's also in the finance committee, so it's very important that he attends that meeting, so he has to leave at 10:00. So if you will allow a slight change in the agenda, I know there are items in Mr. Pierce's report that should be discussed while Mr. Parrish is here, and if anybody else further down in the agenda has items that they need to address while Mr. Parrish is here, I would ask you guys, the commission, to allow that, and then we'll get back on with the agenda after that's over.
Okay, go ahead.
And Commissioners, compound things, I know we're switching agenda a little bit. Michael's done a great job of giving you all a new format, and I'm getting used to this new format, so hopefully I know where I'm at. Hopefully, wherever I'm at, you all find me also.
To make it talk funny, do the little stuff where I...
Man six.
Yeah, he would get left. That's our part of it.
Yeah, so I've got that one. Let me just, and I won't, well, I'll talk until you tell me to shut up. That's the case I have to walk here, so, all right. The one item, action items on the report, and there's one other, two other items I wanted to tell you about, and then I'll go on from there. This is item number 16 on your county commission agenda. Board action for Mr. Schuler, county attorney, to negotiate amendment to Mr. Pete Berger's existing lease of the airport. Mr. Berger, with the county's permission, built a hangar at his own expense about 20 years ago and entered into a land lease with property the hangar occupies. Mr. Berger currently pays about $1,520 a year in land lease. At the end of the current lease, the hangar will convert to the county, but Mr. Berger would like to donate the hangar to the county now and then increase his payment so that he would pay a hangar and land lease. Mr. Berger is 80 years old and like to do this so that in the event of something happening to him, the hangar which he currently owns does not get tied up in probate or state problems. He is proposing to pay $300 per month, which is more than double what he currently pays, and would like to extend his lease by five years, starting on December 31st, 2019. I have spoken to Jason Puggett, airport manager and Central Aviation, and they both support the proposal. So I request the board action to request Mr. Schuler to negotiate at least amendment with Mr. Berger.
So moved.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Parrish, second by Commissioner Jones, all in favor? That passes unanimously.
Okay, then I would like to at least do two other items if I can. One is not on your report at all, and this is something that happened last week, and I informed most of you all about it. It started last week, but it actually came to conclusion yesterday afternoon. So as the county, as you all were aware, we submitted a request to DEM for, the DEM received $25 million from the legislature last year for counties that were impacted by Hurricane Michael. We put in a request for about $1 million to do sand dune restoration in Franklin County. The problem with our request is the number one priority for funding coming out of DEM was that we show a loss of revenue. They weren't interested in necessarily enhancing projects and programs in any county, Franklin County, any other county, unless it was associated with a loss of revenue, because some of these counties, using Bay County example, they probably lost $500 million in revenue. They lost a lot of money. And I'll be honest with you, when we started this process, I just assumed that the legislature appropriated the money to DEM, and then it was all going to go to one county, because our tax base did not shrink, our sales tax did not drop during Hurricane Michael. So our two revenue streams were not decreased, therefore I was sort of discounting, I'll be honest with you, the potential for us getting any money from the dune restoration budget, but we followed through with it, and yes, last week, DEM contacted, said, "Look, you know, it's an interesting project, but you have to show us a loss of revenue. We are not interested in funding things unless there's a loss of revenue." Well, the only loss of revenue we have is from the hospital. The hospital, as you all may know, was closed from December 9th, the day before the hurricane, until December 31st because, one, for prudence to get, you know, patients and people out of the hospital, and, two, the hospital was damaged by the hurricane. So last week, last Friday, I went out and talked to David Walker, the CEO of the hospital, and asked him to look together and see, get some numbers put together about the loss of revenue, thinking that we'd have some time to work on this and thinking that I would give it to you all this morning. Well, it so happens that yesterday, the DEM called and said, "We need this by close of business on Monday." And so David was very good about putting together some documentation, and so I want to tell you all that I submitted. Admittedly, I didn't have time to get a board meeting. I had to do it by yesterday, but a loss of revenue of some $226,578 is what the hospital said they lost during that period of December 9th to, October 9th to December 31st. So I've submitted that to DEM. I also said parenthetically in my submitted, this is our loss of revenue, but it's possible that if the hospital lost revenue, that the funds would go back to the hospital. I mean, that's a decision you all will have to make at some point, but when I told DEM what the situation was, they said, "Well, just put that in writing." So I'm not committing the money goes back to the hospital, I'm not committing anything, but let's see if DEM even awards us any money. But right now, I have submitted a letter, and you all have it in your files, for $256,000... for $256,000 approximately of lost revenue from the hospital, and if they award us, then I think you all have the choice of deciding how to fund it. We'd ask for $1 million in dune restoration, so if we only get $256,000, I'm not sure we can do enough to make it worthwhile, but let's see what happens. So, I want to tell you all that's what I had to submit without a board action. Then the next item, Mr. Marone, if I can go to it, I had asked, my, my, ARPC executive director, Chris Rito. Chris Rito, I'm sorry, Chris.
Before we go, Chairman, can I ask, do we need to vote to ratify that?
Well, why don't we see what happens? I mean, I mean, you can, but I've submitted it on behalf of the board, but I don't know whether the DEM is going to fund anything or not. What I submitted, I'll be honest with you, Commissioner, as an amendment to our initial application, so it's not, you know, I just submitted it as an amendment, even though I meant it the front and the end, so anyway. All right, so this is item number six, not number six, yeah, number six. It's item number 22 on your report, but there's a paragraph missing. So, on your report, there's two paragraphs, on the real thing, there's three paragraphs. Number 22 on your report. Informed the board, I had written a letter of support months ago for a proposal written by FCMC for a study...
32.
32. All right, 32, yeah. All right. Informed the board, I had written a letter of support months ago for a proposal written by FCMC, which is our Alligator Point people, for a study of alternatives protecting the Alligator Drive and point properties other than through the standard beach renervation. Ms. Sarah Kelty with FCMC submitted the project to an organization called the North Gulf Sentinel Site Cooperative, which is a partnership between the Mississippi and Alabama Sea Grant Consortium, who had received some BP funds. After months of review, the cooperative contacted FCMC and said they liked the project, but did not have enough funds for the whole project. So, the cooperative, on their own initiative, had reached out to FDEP for assistance. FDEP has provided the remaining funds through a FDEP resilience planning grant. The total funding for this study is $59,920, with it split between the cooperative and FDEP. The project will explore what other options are available to make the community more resilient to flooding and erosion, and approves a video of this effect. And again, this is an alternative to beach renervation. We know how beach renervation works, we know how it gets funded. So, this is a study to see what other things could be done for the Alligator Point area outside of beach renervation. All right, so that's what's on your report. But what third paragraph is, "After a series of conference calls over the last few weeks with all parties, it was decided that FCMC would provide a support role, but the lead agency will be the Appalachian Region Planet Council, ARPC. The ARPC will enter into a grant contract with the cooperative and DEP, and Franklin County will have no financial or grant obligations. I say all this so the board and the public are aware of the project, as it will involve some interviews and activities on the port by the ARPC and their associates. Mr. Chris Rito, ARPC executive director, may be here, and he is, to talk briefly about the project. I contacted the ARPC to see if they were interested in administering the project when FCMC could not be the lead, and the ARPC has actually worked with some of these entities before, so they have knowledge of that, they've done some of this kind of studying before. So, it's a good mix, and Chris, do you want to come up and say something? I defer to the Commissioner and the Chairman, but I hope you can.
Come on up. Yeah, that's good.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. As Alan had already talked about, he reached out to us about this project.
Give me your name for the record.
Chris Rito, Executive Director of the Appalachian Region Planet Council.
Thank you.
We're real happy to help Franklin County with this project. This was kind of an opportunity that just came up. Alan reached out to me and asked if we would be interested. Ironically enough, we had just, we've been involved recently with a lot of projects here in Franklin County with respect to resiliency, getting to the point where we're helping you all with Restore, we're doing the Living Shoreline project on US 98 from East Point to Carabel. We're helping with Restore, or I'm sorry, the, I think I already mentioned, Restore Grant Administration for POT 3. We're doing a land management plan for the city of Carabel, so we're doing a lot, getting to the point where we're realizing that we may need some additional assistance, so we went out to RFP for an outside environmental consultant to help us when we start to exceed our capacity. So, we had actually brought in a consultant onboard, just executed that agreement, and got that call from Alan and said, and asked us if we could help. We said we'd be happy to help. Our mission is to serve our local governments, and that's what we've been doing a lot here recently in Franklin County, so we're very happy to have the opportunity, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have specifically on this project. Just to give you a quick update, in addition to what Alan had said, our staff has already met with some of the folks that Alan referenced, the folks from the consortium. We're working on a scope of work that meets the requirements within the grant, coming up with some deliverables, because in this, in the grant itself right now, some of these deliverables are kind of broad, so we're trying to fine tune what those deliverables are. But we have, with the initial meetings that we've had, are very confident that we can meet the tight deadline that's required by this grant.
You want the timeframe on it?
Well, as Alan mentioned, that the pot, the funding is split by two entities, DEP and, I think, consortium dollars. The DEP dollars, if I'm not mistaken, have to be spent by April, the remaining funding has, has to be spent by October. So, we're looking at splitting the deliverables into two separate, almost like two separate contracts. We'll get that first contract deliverable delivered by April and have that funding obligated, and then we can finish the rest of the project in October, but we're very confident we can meet both deadlines.
We should know something by November.
Yeah, well, you'll...
What?
If this body approves, you know, ARPC to be the recipient of the grant, we will start moving on this, and we will get that contract executed, because we will be the recipient, and we will keep you updated as this project moves along.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Parrish, second by Commissioner Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
I pass you none.
Thank you very much. One of the benefits I see of this project, not only some alternative studies, but what I really saw, because the cooperative people are focusing on the video component of this deal, and I say a video, this is a good way to broadcast the dilemma on Alligator Point, because they're going to use the video as a training study, but who knows who's going to see it. And so, if they send it all across the United States, everybody sees what situation Alligator Point has, it's great for us as far as I'm concerned. So, I see the video as almost as much value as the study itself, to be honest with you, because the more word gets out about how much struggling we're having on Alligator Point, the better it is.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Alan, for a point of clarification, this project will no way interfere with the rebuilding of Alligator Point road, should the money be released. It's a totally different project, but it is a project that will help protect that road.
Well, perhaps.
We hope.
It's a study for alternatives besides beach renervation, so we'll see what alternatives are out there, but yeah. And just again, to clarify that again, is that the beach renervation project has nothing to do with rebuilding the road. We are still waiting for FEMA to rebuild the road. The road rebuilding is going to go forward whether anything else ever happens out there.
And, Mr. Chairman, Chris, are you going to take our proposed plans for protection of the road and try to look at how other alternatives for protection can complement what we've already thought of?
My answer to that would be yes. The idea is, is to come up with a list of alternatives in this report that gives, you know, the residents and the county a better idea of how to proceed, but that will be handed over to the county, and it will be up to you all to decide, you know, where you want, which, which alternative you want to use and where you want to go from there. But we will try to do our best to incorporate everything that's already been done and everything that's been talked about, and any other new innovative approaches that haven't been thought of yet.
Okay, and then, any studies that you might give, you'll give proof of historical success of these alternatives somewhere else?
We can certainly do that.
Okay, please.
I'm glad to know that. I ain't know it was nothing but a bucket and, well, a seawall and...
Well, we're going to see, we'll see what's out there.
That's a lot of money to do, yeah.
See, just see, I mean, we have very strong erosion forces out there, which may mean things aren't going to work here that work other places, we just don't know yet. We'll give a list of them.
What to live and learn.
Yep.
I good to know. I thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the good input.
Great.
Mr. Chairman, if I could go on for a couple of other items, and then it's... Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, they did. Okay, never mind, sorry about that.
Yeah, we voted.
Okay, these next items are for information purposes, which you all may want to comment on. Item number 27 on your agenda. Informed the board that FWC has been awarded a $20 million grant from the Gulf Environmental Benefit Fund for Apalachicola Bay Oyster Restoration Phase 2, $20 million. I spoke to Mr. Jim Essie, FWC senior staffer, and see the following detail. This is a five-year project, of which the first two years will be working with FSU Oyster Project, which is funded through the Triumph Board, which you all supported. So, the first two years are with FSU to determine where and how to restart rebuilding the oyster bars. In years three, four, and five, FWC will be placing the oyster substrate in the bay. The goal is to rebuild up to 1,000 acres of oyster reef. The phase one of this project occurred a few years ago, where FWC rebuilt about 300 acres of oyster bars, and I can't remember how much money was spent, some of you all may remember it, but I just, I didn't look it up, but it was a couple million dollars to 300, or 300 acres. And those oyster, you know, substrate is out there now, and hopefully it's working. So, that's item 27. Number 28, informed the board the Apalachicola River Keepers have been awarded a $5 million grant from the Gulf Environmental Benefit Fund to improve three sloughs in the Apalachicola and Chipewa Rivers. The River Keepers will be partnering with the University of Florida and the Apalachicola National Estuary and Research Reserve on that project, and I don't know which three sloughs they are, and I think as they develop those, you'll hear more about. Number 29, informed the board the Commissioner Parrish and I spoke last week, and we understand that a special master appointed by the US Supreme Court has concluded his hearing in New Mexico regarding the Apalachicola River Water Wars, and will make his finding by the end of the year. His findings will be submitted to the court, that being the Supreme Court, who should rule on this sometime in the spring term of the court, which that goes all the way to May, so we don't know when in that time period it would be. We understand that the state of Florida changed its approach and argued that farmers in southern Georgia should be limited in water use. Previously, Florida had argued the city of Atlanta needed to limit its water use, so I don't know, Commissioner Parrish, has got any more to add to that?
Go ahead.
Mr. Lock.
Go ahead.
Well, that's, that's what we were told, from, what I was told by someone who attended the meeting in New Mexico, and it sounded like the state kind of swapped from the city of Atlanta, they said they will, they will continue to conserve and do this and that. Then, the next issue to be dealt with is the South Georgia farmers. I really don't see them doing a whole lot with the South Georgia farmers, because they're growing food, agriculture, to feed the country, so I, I think that was not a very good argument. It's an argument I hope to be construed as in addition to the issues that we have with the city of Atlanta using way more water than what they're entitled to, and thereby starving Apalachicola Bay from the water coming down the river, so. And you never know how a judge is going to rule. He has all the previous information and the, all of that from the special master in Maine, so he has a lot of information that was done in Maine, plus he's addressed some of these issues that were brought up in New Mexico, but basically all we can do is keep our hands tied, you know, our fingers crossed and hope for the best. And he's got to deliver what the Supreme Court asked him to do, was to give Florida a fair shake in this, so we look for him to come to the Supreme Court, come to a decision sometime in May or June of next year, is what I'm being told, or what's being anticipated, so. If we lose this one, we're out of business, because you can't get no higher than the Supreme Court, so everybody keep us in your prayers and hope that we get more water down that river to sustain Apalachicola Bay and Estaway.
I will keep going, Mr. Marone, until you tell me that I'm taking up someone else's time. But it's pretty quick here. Informed the board the Representative Shufa announced on television last week that he's intended to submit a bill in upcoming legislative session for funds to build a new EOC in Franklin County. The board may recall that the new EOC was ranked as our number one priority, so Representative Shufa is trying to get us some money, we'll see how far that goes. Next one, informed the board the Centric Aviation, I met twice with Triumph staff last week to work on the fuel farm and backup generator up here at the airport. As the board may recall, the county has requested $1 million for a new fuel farm and backup generator so that the airport can prepare for future hurricanes, where the airport will serve as a mega center for hurricane recovery. The county has applied for funds saying that, the county has applied for funds saying that the improvements would provide, improve hurricane response of the region. Triumph staff has asked us to revisit the project as a certification training opportunity. The idea is to use the airport as a training center conjunct with the various drone programs that are already funded in the school systems of Franklin, Gulf, and Wacoa counties. Centric Aviation would play a role in the certification process, and it is possible Triumph would increase the grant award to pay Centric for its effort in providing certifications. We are still working on this request from Triumph staff, so even though there's a Triumph Board meeting here tomorrow, Commissioners, at 1:00 in this room, our project is not on the agenda, so you all can attend, but at this time, there's nothing on the agenda that deals with Franklin County. So, I'll tell you all that. Okay, then, just two more items, and I'm done. Board updates from last meeting, item number 33. Commissioner Parrish has asked Mr. Marone to contact Mr. John Collins of AFCON for an update on the construction of the airport access road. I ended up speaking with Mr. Collins. AFCON, the road contractor, have reached an agreement on price, and construction should start in December. The holdup was not over price, but over a permitting requirement from the Northwest Water Management District. AFCON did not want to issue a notice of proceed and put the contract on the clock until all the permit issues have been cleared up. Actually, I got, I got a physical copy of that permit yesterday, and AFCON, I spoke to them, they should be getting a contract down for us to sign here in the next week or two, so we should be good to go on that. And item B of that same thing. I sent out an email to the Commissioners the day after the last meeting advising that I had received an email from FCMC saying that FEMA had agreed to let the county proceed with rebuilding the Alligator Drive as one project. I then was copied on an email from Senator Rubio's office saying that FEMA was going to set up a follow-up meeting with the county to discuss the project. That meeting has not yet been scheduled. Mr. Clay Kennedy with Dubear has contacted Anderson Columbia to make sure that their bid is still good, because we are beyond the 60-day window where some bids are no longer valid because of cost increases. Since the bid was announced, Tropical Storm Nester did minor damage to the road base, so before Anderson Columbia responds to the inquiry about their bid, they were going to investigate the road to make sure the conditions were the same as what they bid on. Now, we know they're not exactly the same. We all understand the asphalt is gone, but that was going to be removed by the contractors, so that is not a substantial change. The question is, was there a lot of shifting of, of the unlying? We don't think there was. Clay and I have talked, we've all been out there, I mean, we put the road back in a 24-hour period, so there wasn't substantial damage, so I don't expect Anderson Columbia, and they didn't really think there'd be an issue, but they want to go out there and look at it. The critical thing is, when is FEMA going to hold this meeting, and when are we going to get this PW obligated? So, I continue to encourage the public to continue to call your elected officials and say, "What's going on?" You know, because if you know that money's obligated, we're still in limbo. And then the last item is something that came up in Mr. Marone's report last time, he's due some changes. So, discussion of my future plans. The board has authorized Mr. Marone to make certain personnel changes to increase his administrative capabilities. Those changes will allow some of my board responsibilities to migrate to this new position, so at this time, I'm not going to recommend another consultant replace me. I'm here to assist the board, but I think it is prudent to see what capabilities are generated by Mr. Marone's changes before the board hires another consultant. And using this report as an example, it would be very difficult to hire a consultant to develop this kind of report. This comes from years of contact on behalf of the county, and many of these items are better performed in-house, so it's just a matter of me telling somebody what I know, and then I walk away. So, that's what I'm trying to do. That's why these reports are getting longer. Okay, they're getting longer, I'm speaking faster, so it all is working towards a dramatic conclusion here. All right, that's my report, Commissioners.
Okay, Mr. Pierce, can we clear up some on this, before the room was hit on this archer project?
Yes, sir.
It will be three years before they start putting the arches, I assume, on the wild bars?
Yes, it's on the wild bars, yes, sir, and I presume three years. It's possible, and I say this now, Jim Essie did not say this, so I'm interpreting something. All right, that's my report, commissioners.
Okay, Mr. Pierce, can we clear up some on this, before the room was hit, on this archer project?
Yes, sir.
It will be three years before they start putting the arches, I assume, on the wild ball?
Yes, it's on the wild ball, is it, yes, sir, and I presume three years. It's possible, and I say this now, Jim Essies did not say this, so I'm interpreting something. If, in fact, the FSU study proceeds faster, it's possible they get faster. To my knowledge, they got twenty million dollars all as a lump sum, that it wasn't spread out. So it's a matter of the timing between FSU and FWC as to when they think they are confident about where the future water flows are going to be, so where they put the oyster shells.
Okay, well, the reason I'm asking, because you know, when they find out money, are they, they're going to be asking when they start to work?
Yes, sir, I, I, I'm going to, I, I won't deviate from the, from the schedule that Mr. Essies gave me, he said, "The first two years are evaluating future, what they're projecting future conditions on the bay, and where the best water is going to be to grow the most oysters."
So it'll be safe, we tell them it'll be three years?
I would say so, yes, sir.
And we're, Mr. Chairman, we're, we're not responsible for administering this twenty million dollars.
No, no, it's all FWC.
Nothing in the county's hand, this project being run by FWC. And there was, as you remember, about two years ago, I went to the river conference in Tallahassee, and speaking with NIFW, which is over this, yeah, over that fund, they, they basically told me they had thirty-eight million dollars set aside for the state of Florida, but the state of Florida had not requested any of the money. So I'm sure that this twenty million dollars is part of that thirty-eight million dollars that they had set aside, and I'm glad to see a state agency actually moving forward and putting their hands around some of this money on behalf of Apalachicola Bay, so even though it's a five-year project, it, it's better than what it was two years ago.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
They hadn't even applied for the money, so.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I...
Getting some kind of program going for the bay.
Yeah, I, I don't see how I would say this positively. So five or eight years ago, shortly after the oil spill, we were putting lists of projects together, and with the county listed Apalachicola Bay Recovery as one of our number one projects. At that time, I contacted FWC and said, "Look, we need a partner in this," and I could not get a partner, I could not get a commitment from any state agency to assist the county in this, so I was, you know, it was like, oh, boy, they're really abandoning us, but so I'm very happy to see, two or five or years later, that FWC did get twenty million dollars, and they made this request on their own, you know, for a program that they're going to run.
Mr. Chairman, Alan, on item number twenty-eight, about the Apalachicola River Keepers being awarded five million, is that slough improvement also something that facilitates water flow into the bay?
Well, I think it's the other way around, actually, it'll reduce water flow into the wetlands and to the swamp. Yeah, I think what it is, and I say this without any direct information, that they're going to remove some of the sand, sand plugs that the Corps of Engineers put when they're dredging the river, so I think that they're going to try to facilitate water going back into the wetland areas.
Which is where all your fish go in to spawn and breed in the springtime.
Yeah.
It'll allow more of that, so it should help the fishing, the concentration of fish once they're able to get in, lay their eggs, and the eggs hatch and produce more fish.
Okay, I am done.
I hope, I hope they do both parts, you know, once, once they get it back, if they get it back, I hope they keep, they don't leave us like that and have somebody that will control it.
Yeah, well, I think, of course, now, they don't dredge the lower edge of the river, so once it's done, I suspect that it will, should stay in more west of the...
No, I'm talking about the oil.
Oh, the oil, yeah.
I'm, FWC, I mean, they got, if they don't have somebody that's watching it, they're going to tote it off and make sure they get the right limit.
Chairman, that's, that's been a challenge these last few years, when there really aren't enough oyster out there to harvest, but they continue to harvest anyway.
Yeah, I know, so they, they need to get it fixed, and then they got to make sure they enforce.
All right, commissioners, I don't really have any items that I think have to be discussed right now, unless you guys see something on my report, because I'd like us to get back on track with the agenda and move along, because we have a rather large P and Z, and we have three, what could turn out to be three long public hearings coming up also.